Good morning. It's nine AM and I will call to order the November 30th meeting of the Slayne County Board of Commissions. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson?
Here.
Commissioner Weath?
Here.
Commissioner White?
Would you all please stand for the flag salute in a moment of silence?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If everyone can make sure that microphones, phones, and other electronic devices are muted when you're not speaking so that remote observers can hear the proceedings clearly, I would appreciate it. Now Brad, our IT director could instruct everyone on how to raise their hand in the meeting.
Good morning.
Morning Brad.
Users in the Zoom meeting are looking for the raise hand function. On the newer Zoom clients, the raise hand function is down on the bottom toolbar. On the older versions of the Zoom client, you would select participants and then the raise hand function will be revealed over in the lower right-hand portion of the screen. That will let the host know that you would like to speak in the meeting. Thank you.
And thank you Brad. At this time, we will move into our citizens input portion of the meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items not on discuss on today's agenda. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment?
Yeah, Norman Allen Salina, Kansas. I was talking here recently and I was kind of discussing it with Mike White, how you fill a position in government. And you remember Mike, you mentioned the word, kind of like the lottery system, how you point somebody to a position? How you, okay. But how we're selecting these people to fill a position? It's just five of you are selecting these people. That's favoritism. It's not clarity. If you read the news or was watching TV, how was the jury selected that Kyle Whittinghouse was tried in Wisconsin? The same method. All the people that fill out a form, you sign a number to it and you put it in the pill bottle. That will eliminate the humans. No favoritism, no cornyism, not knowing anybody, selecting people to this position. That's how that jury was filled in Wisconsin. We need to change the method we're doing it. Okay. Last week, no, two weeks ago, I went to Wichita to the VA hospital to talk to people. And I talked, went to this department and I talked to the director of this department. And I says, we've got a problem with how law enforcement treats people. She says, you're right. Her name was Misty. We went into a conference room. We sat down and talked. Color of clothing, how you people act towards people is a problem. She says it's even a problem in the radiation, radiology department. The color of clothing is a threat to people. How you act is a threat, even in the VA hospital. Also, these people that are SRO officers in school, how they dress, their mannerism is intimidating. We need to change the mannerism, how they act, how they dress, it's a threat. Anyone carrying a weapon is a threat. She said, yes, that's right. These law enforcement officers that go to training school, I discussed that with her. I says, they go to firearms training. They don't know what danger is. I says, that target they shoot at, it doesn't shoot back, does it? She says, no, it don't. They need to understand that. So there's another issue that's being discussed more than once. It's been discussed since July, property rights. It's being discussed again in the US Supreme Court.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else like to speak?
Mr. Chairman, we do have a hand raised.
Okay.
By someone in the Zoom meeting.
Please state your name and address, please.
Ms. Lecliter, unmute your system and you're free to speak.
Linda Lecliter, Rose Salina. Concerning the clocking out time for county employees, have you looked into just setting it up online and save the expenses of buying time clocks? That's all.
Okay, thank you. I think that is being looked at as we speak. So that is, it was discussed last week and I think they're looking into it. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Seeing none, at this time, we'll move into our consent agenda, which consists of approval of prior minutes as presented on 1115 and 1116, approval of tax rule adjustments as presented, approval of accounts payable, and approval of public forum agenda. Are there any commissioners who wish to add or delete items from this consent agenda? Hearing no objections, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Second? It's been moved and seconded that we approve consent agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. This time, we'll move into action items. Item one.
RFA 269-21 bid award for high-pressure breathing air compressor with David Summerfield, Row Fire District Number Two.
Good morning, Mr. Summerfield.
Good morning, Commissioners. I am David Summerfield, Assistant Fire Chief, Fire District Two, and Secretary Treasurer for Board of Trustees.
Okay.
Little background, we've been looking at doing this for over a year, deciding what we need. Slone Fire Department blessed us with new to us breathing apparatus that are significantly different and better than what we were using. They run at a 4,500-pound pressure instead of 2216 like our old ones. So we started looking at what we need to be able to fill our own breathing apparatus and put together a set of specifications for a new compressor. And those were submitted to the county administrator's office. They were put out for bid and we have the results now. And what if trustees made a decision on which one to buy? And I would entertain questions if you have any right now.
I have a question is, one of them that come to mind is, is that, uh, Real Fire District Two is to purchase this agreement or this apparatus, this, uh?
Yes.
Air compressor. Does, do any of the other real fire districts use the same tanks that you've got?
Um, I think all of the rural fire departments are using a 4,500-pound breathing system except District Six, which is small. Okay. They are small. They don't have a big budget. We gifted them our old breathing apparatus that were still in compliance and usable. Gave them some spare cylinders. And as far as I know, right now, they come into Slone Fire or they would have come to our fire station to fill their breathing cylinders when they were used.
This new, uh, pressure tank, well, is it able to fill the older ones plus the new ones?
Yes. Yes, we have a fill station that's got a regulator on it that we can regulate from 2216 to 4,500 pounds.
Okay. And the other real fire districts that have the newer tanks like you're wanting to fill here?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, will they come to you then to fill their tanks?
If they don't have a breathing fill system themselves, District Five does, I know for sure. I think Seven may have a fill compressor. I'm not sure about District Three. But if, if we had a mutual aid incident where they came into our district, we could fill their breathing apparatus for them.
Okay, so this is not a, a, kind of a joint situation where all the real fire districts can just come and use it? How, how often does one of these tanks have to be filled? Is it like after every call that you go out?
Every call, every time you use one, you have to fill it. You got to stay in service.
Okay. I just, that's funny. So, okay.
And in the past years, let's see, the compressor we're replacing was, it wasn't sold to us, but it was given to us for use from Slone Fire Department, probably 15 years ago. That compressor was new in the mid 90s somewhere. I hired on Slone Fire Department and in 94 and sometime after, shortly after that, they put it into service, used it for their system. They upgraded, they gave it to us. We have a fill cascade system and a fill station. So like I say, we've had it in use for almost 15 years.
Dave, what is going to happen with, with your present compressor?
We are going to have to talk with Slone Fire Department. Hannah and I were just visiting. It may be that we can give it to District Six. With Slone Tech having a fire science class, it may be something that would go to them to use with their school system. I don't know. All I know is we can't sell it ourselves because it was Slone Fire Department property and we'd have to work that out with them.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I will bring it back to, uh, action for more action.
Mr. Chairman, I move to award the bid for breathing air compressor from Conrad Fire Department, Inc. in the amount of $25,542.09.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA number 269-21 bid award for a high-pressure breathing air compressor. Are there any other comments or questions? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you for time. Have a good day.
Good morning, Rosie.
Good morning.
We'll move into item two.
RFA 270-21 Meals on Wheels America Pet Assistance Expansion Grant with Rosie Welter, Department of Senior Services Director.
Good morning, Rose.
Good morning, Commissioners. Senior Service requests commission approval to accept 20,000 in grant funding from Meals on Wheels America for our existing program, Meals on Wheels and Healthcare for Pets Program. Slayne County was identified as an underserved area for the pet program to assist homebound seniors receiving Meals on Wheels. Meals on Wheels America has asked this agency to promote and grow our existing program. Currently, we have 30 pets enrolled in the program. Friends of the Animal Shelter provide the shots and nail trimming, spaying and neuting and neutering and minor surgeries. And then Atherton provides the food at their cost. Staff is working, or I've talked with Meals on Wheels America, to promote our program and different ideals on how we could do that because the funding was supposed to go from November 21st to April 22nd, which doesn't allow for a lot of time to spend, $20,000. So we have worked out the forecasted expenses on how we can go about doing that. But also, we did ask if we could extend that funding cycle and we were allowed that. Um, I got a phone call from Meals, just a little bit of history. We got a phone call from Meals on Wheels America when we became a member and we identified all the services we provided. Well, they called our agency and interviewed us several times, asking about how other agencies could get started with the program. So they came up with this different funding and they funded five agencies across the United States. Slayne County is one of them. So I'm very excited. We have about 30 pets, so we just really want to promote that and do advertising and get all of that out there. Any questions?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. Quickly, uh, one of the things here, it's, are, are we, that's county going to be required to buy the online management system from them?
Um, no. And, you know, we did look at an online management system, but really, we want to put it into promoting the program. So we're, the forecast expenses that we want to do are the pet food, the vet care, volunteer recruitment, and pet recruitment. So we're just going to put the money into that. I mean, maybe eventually down the line, we'll look at a system that would allow all of our partners to input data into it so that we know what pet has received what services.
Okay, but, and I'm just going to say, since this is pretty much a federal government-funded thing, and when it says "our" software, I'm, I'm looking at that going, do we have to have that though?
No.
I mean, you've already cleared that all up?
Yeah, we do not have to have that.
Okay. It just, I mean, your next steps is going to have to be that to have that, okay? Uh, and that was the thing. Then we come up with a deal there, this grant program design, uh, that you're going to have to, that, the way it suggests is that you have to hire some people to promote this business.
Um, it was, those are ideas, I mean, that you can do. We're, we're not going to do that with, and they have told us that will probably in the future be additional funding that we could apply for. And maybe at that time, we could, but our program is not really big enough at 30 pets. So maybe...
And, and the way I read this is that it's like, and you're at 30 now, but they're giving you, providing you this grant money for you to grow it.
Right.
And here's what the things you've got to do to, to get that fund.
Yeah. I mean, those are suggestions on how you can spend the money.
Okay.
To promote it, but, um, we worked out this with Meals on Wheels America for the forecasted expenses. So they have, I mean, we've gone through each thing of what we're going to do for Slayne County.
Okay. And the, the deal here where it says $15,000 over here, but in your...
They originally set $15,000, but then they came back and asked me, interviewed a little bit more, and asked me if I would take 20, if I could spend 20. I'm not going to say no.
So as short as you are on staff already and you guys are, are doing this, I mean, do you feel that with this here to be able to get this, that you, do you feel you have the manpower now to keep handling these pets and, and, and your staff to put together a program?
Well, one of the things that I, that I want to do is recruit more volunteers because I, I don't have the time, you know, and right now, I'm delivering all the pet food. So if I can get more volunteers to help out, and I, I really don't think that that will be a problem. I've just taken that on myself. I need to be able to pass that on.
Okay. All right. Any other comments?
Rosie, I, I assume that someone in order to enroll in this pet program, they also first must be enrolled on Meals on Wheels.
That is the, pretty much the only qualifying thing is they have to be a Meals on Wheels client.
And, and you're talking, you're saying you're delivering the, the pet food at a different time than you deliver the Meals on Wheels?
Yes, because, um, a lot of our pets are big pets. You're, you're looking at 50-pound bags of food to cover it for a month. It's too much to ask our volunteers, which are mainly seniors, to deliver that in addition to the food.
I, I would also like to make the comment that you're a pretty highly-paid delivery person.
No, we definitely need more volunteers just for our Meals on Wheels program.
Defined, uh, for me, I'm not too smart on this one, a, a pet recruitment for $4,000. What, what is pet recruitment?
Well, um, we are going to host different, um, things with our volunteers that already deliver Meals on Wheels for our pets so that they can reach out to those because I don't always know who has a pet and who doesn't. So the volunteers do know that. So they're going to give them the information, try to get them signed up on that Meals on Wheels for Pets program.
Okay, I'm, I'm in favor of, of doing anything we can to help shut-ins and so forth. But, but I'm not in favor of spending more than $20,000, which is what our grant is. So I mean, if this should, something happens to exceed this, I'm not, I'm not for spending county funds to do this.
Um, none, none of it will come out of county funds as it does not now.
So I'll just give you a hypothetical situation then. If we were to go out in 60 days and we spend the 20,000, the program's over.
Exactly.
Okay.
Now that you've spoke and now you've decided and you've let us know that you're the person handling these 50-pound bags, what scares me is that here we are paying you your salary, which is, and you're supposed to be doing this, is that now we're hoping and praying that you do not hurt yourself handling a 50-pound bag. And I'm going, what's the liability here for the county and, and you handling this? That's, that's what scares me as much as anything about this whole thing now. I wasn't aware of that. But now that you've brought that to our attention, I'm going.
I do have help. I do, I do get some help that go with me.
Okay, but...
Well, my suggestion in, in that case is that, uh, that we don't take this program on until we have, uh, been assured that we have the, the people, the volunteers to carry it out without using our staff to do so.
Yeah. And that's, I'm, I'm partially behind that, but it's like on the flip side, it's like, here's the grant money that we're going to get to help promote and do what we're just saying we don't want to do. But we need the funds here to, to grow it, to find the people to help. So, yeah, because where we're sitting here saying it's like, we don't want to spend any taxpayer money to do this. Well, here's the grant money to help us find and recruit and grow.
Mm-hmm. Well, part of the grant is to recruit volunteers.
It's a, it's a catch 22, sure, for sure. Yep. Any other comments by the commission? Anyone from the public who wish to speak? I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chair, I move we accept the $20,000 in grant funding for Meals on Wheels America for the Meals on Wheels and Healthcare for Pets program as presented.
Second motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA number 270-21 Meals on Wheels America Pet Assistance Expansion Grant. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Move into action item three.
RFA 266-21 bid award for Real Fire District Number Six turnout gear purchase with Michelle Barkley, Emergency Management Director.
Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning. I am here on behalf of Rural Fire District Six. A little background, back in 2020, they had a new fire chief come on board and since then, they've been doing some restructuring. They've had an influx of volunteers. Their training regimens have, and schedules have transitioned a little bit. And they're becoming more of a presence in their district. So they have requested the purchase of nine cents of turnout gear for firefighters. As Dave prior to from District Two and, um, mentioned, District Six does inherit a lot of their equipment and their gear, much like some of this turnout gear that we are looking to replace. It is just outdated for them, as well as they've had some additional volunteers sign on and they just sure don't have the amount of turnout gear to equip them. They did receive two quotes from Wise Fire and Safety, being $2,637.40 per set, meaning that the total cost would be $23,736.60. They also received a quote from Pro Equipment. This is a little bit different in the type of turnout gear that they currently have. And that was slightly more expensive at $2,878 per set for a total of $25,902. On behalf of Rural Fire District Six, they would like to recommend the purchase of the Wise Fire and Safety equipment. It was the lower bid and it also matches with the current equipment that they have on hand for turnout gear. If you have any further questions, I would like to note that they will be paying this out of their special equipments fund that has a balance of $81,272.94.
Michelle, just a point of, of information, who is the new fire chief?
Alan, Alan Homquest.
Homquest?
Any other comments by the commission? Anyone from the public who wish to speak? Hearing none, I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt, uh, the, the, the bid award turnout gear to Wise Fire and Safety Equipment, the amount of $23,736.60 as defined in RFA 266-21.
Second motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA number 266-21 bid award for RFP six turnout gear purchase. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item four.
RFA 264-21 Amendment One to Resolution 17-2237 Burning Restrictions with Michelle Barkley, Emergency Management Director.
Good morning, Michelle.
Good morning again, Commission. Just a little background, we did have a study session- We did have a study session over this a couple of months back, and you did instruct me to reach out to the Prescribed Burn Committee. Um, I would like to thank you. We had a lot of great, um, discussion, and it was a really great opportunity to get some, um, very encouraging feedback. A lot of the farmers are looking forward to the fact that there's less limitations on when they attempt to do prescribed burning. I understand the, um, equipment, the time, and the manpower that goes into doing a burn safely. Um, and I by no means want to call that off just because there's an out of control burn somewhere else in the county that's not in the same district. So over the last few years, um, we've had some clarification issues. And from that, uh, discussion between Emergency Management, Rural Fire Districts, um, the Dispatch Center, and now the Prescribed Burn Committee, um, have come up with these four, uh, amendments to provide further clarification. Um, that first amendment would be, um, to confirm upon the initial phone call when they call in a burn, um, to ask if adequate water is on hand. This is simply just a yes or no question. Um, we are not by any means going to become the water police. I just want to make sure that people are thinking about that. We do have some individuals that only burn every two or three years, um, and sometimes the rules, um, get forgotten, so I just want to make sure that we're all up to date on those, um, before they start burning. Um, the other change would be to prohibit burning, um, from extreme fire danger days to very high. Like I mentioned in the study session, the National Weather Service, um, provided us with a report over, um, the last twenty-four months uh, compared to extreme fire danger days and very high, um, the Wichita office just doesn't issue many extreme fire danger days. Um, they said that they're just more prone to do, um, very high. Uh, it just depends on the National Weather Service Office. That amendment would then lead into the, the third change, which would, um, allow for only agricultural burning to take place twenty-four hours before, um, one of those very high fire danger days. Um, this means, uh, grass, crop residue, pastures, CRP, and stubble. Um, after looking at some reports, uh, compiled from Rural Fire District calls and out of control burns, um, it was proven that a lot of your limb piles, um, your brush piles are the ones that are most likely to rekindle that next day due to high wind speeds. Um, and again, those are the reasons why we're not allowing, um, those planned, uh, stubble or CRP or pasture burns um, when people have gone to the extent just because a brush fires, a brush pile has rekindled. So, um, due to some deliberation with Rural Fire, um, and the Prescribed Burn Committee, they both agreed that that'd probably be the best course of action, um, to limit those burns that aren't deemed essential, especially with the, uh, cutoff date for CRP. Um, and lastly, um, the amendment to allow for, um, one or more fire districts responding to any call, um, the Rural Fire Chief, um, and Emergency Management, um, after consulting with the Rural Fire Chief, has the authority to suspend, um, controlled burns within their district. Um, and then once the chief notifies, um, Emergency Management or Dispatch, we will resume burning in that district. That's just to keep in mind that Rural Fire is volunteers. They have limited equipment and resources and manpower, and if they've been out on a call for several hours, their equipment could be damaged, or their personnel could be tired, and I just don't want to continue to exhaust those resources if we don't have to. Are there any questions?
I have a comment, uh, regarding just that, Michelle, and I'm, I'm very happy to, to hear that you was able to reconvene your, your, uh, group to take this on, because they are the very people that it affects. And, and the last thing that you mentioned was the, uh, when, when one fire district has to go to help another fire district, that doesn't leave anybody at the station to go back and help. And that was one of the calls earlier in the year that I got, is they just didn't understand that, why that, why that should happen. And there are so many people that, uh, think that the county commission and/or your department is the ones making these decisions on how to handle this. And now you've got that group together, which is actually the people that it affects. And, and that is the way to really handle that, and we can fall back on that time again, uh, by you doing that. And that's, I want to commend you for that, so, thank you.
And I would like to note that these, um, amendments, if approved, would not go in effect until the first of next year. That would allow, um, my office a month to educate those that are continuing to call in, um, for burning and to educate the community on these changes.
Okay, thank you, you're very well. Any other comments by the commission? Anyone from the public who wish to speak? Bearing none, I will bring it back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move, uh, we adopt the Amendment Number One to Resolution seventeen dash twenty-two thirty-seven as presented by Staff and RFA two sixty-four days twenty.
Second motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA number two sixty-four dash twenty-one Amendment Number One to Resolution seventeen dash twenty-two thirty-seven Burning Restrictions. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All opposed, same sign? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you and good luck. Item five.
RFA two six seven dash two one City of Salina Broadcasting Agreement with Bill Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Morning, Mr. Phil.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Um, this is a follow-up to an item we discussed a couple of months ago, as the commission is well aware. Um, Salina Media Connection, which did our recording and broadcasting for a number of years, has transitioned out to doing different things, and the city has, uh, brought on, uh, city staff to record their meetings. They have been also, uh, going ahead and doing our meetings, and, um, we wanted to put that in a formal agreement with them. Uh, so, uh, we drafted that, County Counselor Montoya drafted it, and we send it over to them, and they've just had a lot on their plate, so it's taken a little bit, uh, for them to get back to us, but we finally, uh, have their blessing to move forward. And, uh, if approved, the agreement would start tomorrow. Um, we had originally talked about a cost of, um, around seventy-five hundred dollars annually for the service. What we settled on was, um, to do a, a flat rate of, um, five hundred a month, which would translate to six thousand. To do up to eight hours a, a month of, uh, broadcasting, and then an hourly rate for each hour, or actually each fifteen minutes, uh, beyond that. Felt like that was probably the most economical thing. Um, it, uh, very rarely do our meetings last in excess of eight hours. Of course, there are a few behind the scenes thing that they have to do to, to prepare for them. Um, but, um, that brings the cost down a little bit for us if we don't speak too long in our meetings. Um, and, uh, but also provides them assurance of, of their workload, so, um, be happy to answer any questions.
The, Phil, the, um, actual charge time begins at, I mean, as an example today, at nine AM? Or do we have to pre, uh, do we have to pay for their prep time?
Um, no, so it's defined as the meeting time, eight hours of meeting broadcast time.
On air?
Yeah.
Okay. So talk fast.
Couple of questions, Phil. I, I see that, uh, this is going to be funded, proposed, funded out of the county uh, contingent, Commissioner's Contingency Fund. If, correct me if I'm wrong, but at our, at our budget prep for twenty twenty-two, we cut that contingency fund down from a hundred thousand a year to twenty-five thousand a year. And now we're gonna be taking six, seven thousand out of it. That, that, it's a quite a big piece of that pie, um, which doesn't really leave us a whole lot of funding for us to find other special things that we might want to do. I, I just have, uh, a little bit of qualms about that.
So, thank you for pointing that out, um, Commissioner Wees. Um, it, you know, when we talked about this previously, I said, well, there's a few different options, one of which would be we could reduce the allocation to Salina Media Connection for next year, because we went ahead and put that in the budget for next year. Commission didn't give me a yea or nay on that, so, um, you know, Commissioner Contingency is, you know, this, this funding has come out of your budget in the past, and, you know, it's more than that particular line item, um, would absorb, so I think, uh, Commissioner Contingency is the place absent doing something else. But, um, as I said, we could certainly, um, you know, we, we allocated fifteen thousand to Salina Media Connection. Uh, they're no longer running channels in the same way that they did in the past. We could reduce their allocation by six thousand and repurpose it for this. That, that would be a simple change if the commission wanted to go there.
Why can't we take the six thousand out of the general fund, which is where the, the money that's left over from the prior year goes back to anyway?
Well, the Commissioner Contingency is within the general fund, but we just, we need a specific line item to charge it to on a monthly basis.
Well, I, I'm with Commissioner Wees on this one. Uh, I, I, I don't want to see the Commissioner's Contingency Fund. You know, in, in the, the five years that we've been on here, we haven't even come close to approaching spending the Commissioner's Contingency Fund, which is why we reduced it by, I think, seventy-five thousand dollars. You know, which I think is a wise move, but I don't want to cut that thing to the bare bones to, we may have something come up one of these years. We need that money. So I, I don't want to see it come out of that line item.
I do know in the past, I, I believe, uh, Rosie's gone, if you might not know the history of it. But, uh, we did, uh, use quite a bit of the County Commissioner's Contingency Fund for, uh, for the adoption of the senior center when they came on board here. Uh, that was quite a large price tag, and we, uh, we opted to, uh, fund it from that contingency fund. I'd like having it for an emergency. I, I know it's, uh, it's one purse with many pockets in it. And, uh, I'm sure if something comes along, um, maybe another pocket could be open to fund something, but, uh, I, I would like to get a education on what, um, Salina Media Connection is actually doing, uh, how they're using the funding, what they're proposing to do in the future, and, uh, we could address it there. For a one-time solution, yeah, I would, I would, um, I would probably vote yes for this, uh, but I'd like to have an education on, on the other funding.
Yeah, I think that's entirely appropriate. You know, the, and as you correctly point out, we're really just talking about four twenty-two, and we're we're only in this position because the city of Salina, um, it chose to change the way that they did the meeting broadcasts, sort of after we had already had all our budget discussions for twenty-two, and so, yeah, I mean, we're really talking about dipping into the contingency just for next year, and then as we develop the twenty-three budget, um, uh, you know, we would look to where we would be able to fund this money, and as a matter of course, if Salina Media wants to continue to request an allocation, we would ask them to come present to you, just like we do High Plains, or, uh, Central Against Mental Health, and, and, um, OCCK and all the other, uh, providers. So, um, yeah, I think you're, you're right on track, but we could certainly, um, even ask them if they would be willing to come in December, and we could have that conversation earlier if that's the will of the commission.
Well, we're only hearing from a couple of us, but I, I'm, I'm not in favor of taking, uh, this money from the Com- Commissioner's Contingency. And I'll hang my hat on that one. I think it's a well-thought-out plan, um, and, and negotiated, uh, dollar-wise, but I, I don't want to see it come from that line item.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Phil, but, um, at the first year, there's going to be twenty-five thousand dollars available in the Commissioner's Contingency Fund, yes?
That's correct.
And we're taking this out of twenty-one's Commissioner Contingency Fund, providing we approve this request?
No.
I missed that part.
Yeah, sorry. That's great clarification, Commissioner White. So, um, the contract is a one-year contract from, uh, December one of twenty-one through December, or November thirtieth of twenty-two. Then it, you know, we have the option to renew, of course, right? But, um, for the month of December, we would have twenty-one, we would have a payment due to, uh, the city of Salina for that month. Uh, presumably, it would be five hundred dollars unless we have really lengthy meetings. And there is five hundred dollars available in other line items within the commission budget, the, the, uh, line where you've traditionally, uh, spent the money to Salina Media Connection. You usually spent about fifteen hundred a year. That line has five hundred dollars left in it. So we would take that payment for December out of there. Um, because we haven't been paying Salina Media for the last six months. But for twenty-two, we need a place to take it, and we would need, um, six thousand, assuming we renew fifty-five hundred if we only do the first eleven months of the year. That needs to come from somewhere, and there's not fifty-five hundred dollars in that particular line. So I, well, okay, Commissioner Contingency is, is the place where there is that money that's not spoken for, for some other expense. Um, but again, a- as I said, there, there are other places in the budget that we could take it. We would just need to juggle some things around, like, for example, changing the amount that we wanted to, um, pay to Salina Media.
Okay, well, I'm definitely in favor of the agreement, and as far as which pot the money comes out of which pot, I, I honestly don't care. It's, needs to be paid from somewheres, and we've got monies available, so I'll leave it at there.
Quick question here is that if, if, uh, we have not spent the money, if we still have funds available at the end of this year in our contingency fund, and, and I don't know if there is any, I'm, I'm just saying if there is, can that just be rolled over into next year's contingency fund instead of going back to the general fund? You can't do that? Well, I'm just, I'm just asking.
Yeah, no, that's a good question, Commissioner, but no, um, and that's, that's not a Phil answer, that's an accounting rule. Um, that, you know, all, all funds that are unspent within, you know, K- in Kansas, you legally adopt a budget at the fund level, and so all money that's available within a fund, in this case, we're talking about the general fund, which is where the commission budget, uh, you know, is a department within that fund. Um, all, all monies available at the end of the year that are unspent go back to the balance of that fund.
Okay, and, and for, for that reason, I mean, at any time during the year, we can just ask you or whoever to, we need some general fund money put into this account? Can you just transfer monies out of the general fund to a special account?
The five of you can, can, um, can adopt a budget amendment that, um,
And that's what it takes.
Transfers money within a fund. Um, if you, um, if you increase the total appropriation within a fund, you have to go back through the whole budget, uh, amendment process, and you basically adopt a new budget or a, a smaller version of a, of a brand-new budget, but you have to have a public hearing and all that. But if you're just transferring existing appropriations from one place to another, that can be done just by a vote of the commission.
Thank you.
When we are talking long right now, because in a month, we won't be able to have these lengthy discussions, but how do we do the, is there a budget line for commission meetings televised? The, the broadcasting of commission, is there, you, you mentioned we had money still in that account, fifteen hundred, that that five hundred would come out of? Is that correct?
So the answer is sort of.
That's a good.
Yeah. So there has never historically been a line where this was, there's never been a line identified for this expense, right? So in the past, you made an allocation to Slina Media Connection that supported their work and then you paid them a very low hourly fee for the time that they were actually broadcasting your media. I think it was like fifteen dollars an hour. I mean, it was very low. And so that ended up being around fifteen, you know, it varied from year to year, but it was ish fifteen hundred annually for a number of years. And that was just taken from a miscellaneous expense line item in the commission budget. There were other things that came out of that line item as well. Don't have it off the top of my head, but I could get you a detailed list, you know, year by year. But it was just a miscellaneous expense line item. So when we when we started preparing for this contract to be a reality, I said to our staff, you know, we really need a better place for this. So we have created a new line item called something like Video Services. I'm not sure that's the exact title, but it's Video Services or something like that. That line item has been created. But of course, there's no money in it because our twenty-one budget was adopted quite some time ago. For twenty-three, I fully intend to come up with six thousand dollars and put it in the Video Services line item in the commission budget, right? Like that's one of the priorities, I think, for, for the twenty-three budget. But for the twenty-two budget, we didn't, you know, like I said, I, we could shift money from contingency there. We could shift money from, you know, another department to there. We could shift money from an appropriation to there. But right now, that is a zero.
I understand it. A lot of this took place after, long after the budget process had already been done. And, and I, I agree with Commissioner Vidrickson that the Commissioner Contingency Fund, we've whittled it down and, and we're going to be, we won't have a lot of money there to do anything of, of any impact if that comes along. But to, to make this happen, to make it go forward in twenty-twenty-two, that was probably the, the best place to fund that. And then we can address this in twenty-twenty-two when we're doing the twenty-three budget and, and correct these.
I, I agree with those comments. And this isn't a war that's worth fighting for, for this level of money. And I'm still against taking it out of the Commissioners Contingency Fund, but I'm going to go along with exactly what Commissioner Weiss said. I do have a question. When we appropriated this Slina Media money, had the city already made the determination that they were not going to be the, that Slina Media was no longer going to be projecting these meetings out? Or do you remember the timeframe there?
I do remember the timeframe and the answer is the same answer I gave earlier, which is sort of. Salina Media, the, the discussion between the city of Salina and Slina Media Connection occurred in June. And we had already programmed the allocations in May. That is when all the different bodies came and spoke to you was in May. They were aware that, that the city was considering this when they came and spoke to you. But the response collectively from the commission was, okay, we'll just, we'll just leave it alone for now. Leave it at the same level. We don't know what the city's going to do. We did, you know, we didn't actually adopt the budget you know, formally until August. So there was a period of time after which, or after the city had made its decision when we knew this and we could have made a change at that time. And and I mentioned it to the commission a couple of times, but nobody ever said, oh, yeah, go change that. So it never got changed before, before the adoption. So so the number got established before we knew what the city was going to do and then it didn't get changed after.
And if I recall, now that you've mentioned those things, that we did say, well, we're going to go ahead and leave it at that as, as a, you know, helping the Slina Media Connection along, that we felt that that was our civic responsibility. And based on what commissioners have said here today with, with them making a presentation next year on where their money's spent and how they needed, we can better determine the level of giving that we want to partake in. So I'll back down from voting against this because of the Commissioners Contingency Budget and, and look at this totally as different, separate situation for twenty-twenty-three.
A quick question here. When we talked about this agreement calls for city staff to perform the full range of services and to save our county staff. So they will handle the Zoom, they will handle everything, so we don't have to have county staff here?
Correct. Yes. So this might be the last meeting that Kevin gets to sit over here. Or we might have one transition meeting, but they do the Zoom for the city. They're perfectly capable of, of doing that. And so that will free up some time for our IT staff. Yeah.
Okay. At that time, then when, when our head departments or whoever comes in to do a presentation up here, does the city staff take care of that? Or do we have our IT department then come in and do our presentations on the board there?
That presumably will not change. That would go back to the way it was done before. People generally emailed Brad and he sort of set them up. But yeah, I mean, they, they sort of run automatically once they're set up.
All right. Okay. I will bring you back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve by signature the agreement with the city of Salina for recording and broadcasting services as outlined in RFA two-six-seven dash twenty-one.
Second motion.
And before I ask for a motion, is there anyone from the public who wish to speak? Seeing none, all, all those, it has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA number two-sixty-seven dash twenty-one City of Salina Broadcasting Agreement. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item six.
RFA two-six-eight dash two-one Special Inspections for Jail with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Good morning, Phil. Good morning again. So this one, unlike the previous item, we've got money for. So hopefully this will make it a little bit easier. But as part of the building code, when you are building a very large building, like, I don't know, say a jail and sheriff's office, you are required to have an independent third-party inspector kind of look over some of the things that your contractor is doing. So most of the activity out at the jail is under the purview of Turner Construction because we hired them as a construction manager at risk. So all of the subs are really under their purview. But this one, we had to engage independently of Turner because they are in charge of inspecting Turner's work. So the architects from Trainer assisted with going out and finding a number of qualified firms that could perform these inspections. Turner is interested in getting a company engaged as soon as possible because they want to start doing things that require inspections. And so we have had contract negotiations with Cal Valley. They did come in with the lowest price quote and feel like they're very well-qualified to perform these services. They are a local company. So that's all great. Would ask that the commission go ahead and approve a contract with them. However, I will note that the dollar amount that is in their proposal is not really an exact dollar amount because we, we may ask them to expedite some things and, and perform some additional services that would be an additional cost. But there is an amount that is being held in the budget for the project and it is higher than the amount of their quote. So we have a little bit of flexibility there. So I'd be happy to answer any questions and recommend a commission approval of the contract.
Just a comment, Phil. It says that there may be additional trips requested. And it looks like the low bidder is from Salina, which would certainly cut down on the costs of that. I assume that that means mileage and, and trip mileage.
Yes. And yes, we certainly would hope that that would cut down on the costs. And also, one of the great things about it being a Salina-based firm is also hoping that that means increased ease of getting them here. So.
One question. It mentions overtime billed at a standard rate. How do, is this a, you, you call for the inspections at certain point in time. Is there an amount of hours or days that, that this contract covers? How do you hit an overtime benchmark?
Yes. So the inspections are, you're correct, Commissioner Weiss. The when the contractor is doing an activity, say pouring a footing, that is the point in time where you need an inspector on site, right? And so several of the companies who quoted said, okay, well, if that's, you know, if you need an inspector on site on the weekend, that's time and a half. Cal Valley did not. They said, okay, this is our hourly rate. It's the same hourly rate depending on, you know, whenever you need that service performed. So.
So we're estimating the, the amount of hours that we will need inspectors and
The amount of hours and the activities. Yes, those are, but again, as I said, those are estimates and could, could vary depending on if schedules change, et cetera.
And this is the whole game, mechanical, electrical?
Well, they don't do every inspection. Turner will engage their own inspectors to do things that they're legally allowed to do. It's just sort of the big pieces where we need a third party to come in and verify that, you know, Turner's doing it correctly or Turner's sub is doing it correctly. But it is for the duration of the project. It's five-hundred-day length of contract.
I think if we would have had this in place when the addition was put on the jail years ago, we wouldn't have ran into a lot of the problems that we had with, with plumbing and, and situations like that. So I understand the importance of, of having an independent inspection of the work being done.
Looking at eighty-plus-million-dollar project, it's pretty inexpensive insurance policy, basically, to see and, and definitely it's a needed service.
Okay. Any other comments by the commission? Anyone from the public could wish to speak? Seeing none, I will bring you back to the commission for more discussion or possible action.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve by signature the contract with Cal Valley Engineering as presented by staff.
Second, it's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA number two-sixty-eight dash twenty-one Special Inspections for Jail. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move into informational items. County administrators update.
Yes. So just a few things that I wanted to mention this morning. First off, and the KAC, Kansas Association of Counties, is having a special election to determine whether or not the Kansas County Human Resource Association can upgrade from an affiliate to an associate or the other way, I can't remember. And so the KAC has sent out a new voting form. I thought rather than bringing an RFA and doing all that, we would just fill it out with the same people who served in October, which is Chair Sparks, Vice Chair Weiss, and have the chair sign that and send it in unless there are any objections by any commissioners. It's a completely online vote. You don't have to go anywhere for this one. The second item is just a brief update. Grant applications for our water and wastewater funding through the American Rescue Plan Act were due yesterday afternoon. We got around eighteen applications trying to, there were several emails that sort of duplicated. So I think it's right around eighteen. When you peel it down, we have the committee meeting set up for next week. So we will be going through and making sure that we get all that information out of the committee this week and hoping to bring those to your commission for review on the twenty-first. But we're very pleased about the response from the rural water districts and that, as I suspected, that may be something where we end up having to devote a little additional funding because it sounds like there was significant interest. So that's great. And then third and finally, just wanted to provide an update on the legislative special session. As I think most folks know, the Kansas Legislature just before Thanksgiving had a rare special session and it was unique in the way it was called. They met for about thirteen hours and they ended up passing one bill, House Bill two thousand and one, which the governor then subsequently signed on the twenty-third. And that bill creates new law related to vaccine requirements and exemptions and eligibility for unemployment benefits. So any employer that requires vaccination must also provide a medical or religious exemption. That requires vaccination must also provide a medical or religious exemption. And if you do not, you would have monetary penalties. And you're not permitted to question the validity or sincerity of the exemption or to take. Any punitive action against the employee because of an exemption request. And so don't believe that that has any. Impact to the county for a number of reasons, first of which is we have not required any vaccinations. Secondly, when we did provide an opportunity for. Employees to receive an incentive for vaccination, not a requirement. We did also provide the. The medical and religious exemptions to that as well, so. Just wanted the commission to be aware that that. Was in the offing, there is a potential. That. That could come into play depending on some of the funding, there are a couple of federal programs. That do require that if you receive certain federal funding, that you do a vaccine mandate. The. ARPA is not one of those programs, thankfully. So it's it's limited to a very small slice of the county workforce and I have been told that. All the people working in that program voluntarily got the vaccine before any mandate, so. Don't think that applies, but wanted you all to be aware. And that is all I have for today, be happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Phil. I don't have any comments. We'll move into item two.
Commissioners comments.
I don't have any, is anybody else, any other commissioner have any comments? Item three.
Announcements.
Don't have any announcements.
I will make an announcement that the senior center, the. The sewing group over there has a number of items up for auction. Lap blankets, Christmas stockings, a lot of holiday type. Items that are available for for bid at this auction, so I. Think it would be who people who might be interested to make a trip over to the senior center and take a look at the. The work this group has done.
Okay, any other announcements? Okay, hearing none, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.